Welcome, everyone, to the January 19th City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone here at home. We have a smaller group of us today. People are in various other places today. But I want to say that this is quite an important meeting for us on council because it's a chance to hear about the review of the bond measure to fix our streets, the work that's been done that we promised would get done, and the oversight to ensure that nothing has transpired that shouldn't have. So, for us, it's a really important piece of our work. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll turn it over to Kurt in just a moment, but I just want to say again how pleased I've been with the work that's gone on so far in this whole project. And I think to Kurt and his team, they've done a wonderful job of, one, implementing the bond, but, two, getting us to that point of actually going out for a bond issue and building up credibility in the community for that. And I just want to extend my thanks to he and his team as we've gone through this, so...
Before you do that, Kurt, I just want to say, you guys, I almost brought it today, there was a very nice letter to the, a love letter to Public Works in the, in the letter to the editor's office, which I think speaks to people's real appreciation for the good work that's been going on. So, go ahead and tell us.
We all appreciate hearing that, so thank you very much. And so, Pat, this is the first work session I've had since you've been back in the council. It may be like deja vu because this is probably what we were talking about when you were last in the council.
Some things do not change.
Yeah, the message is a little easier now than what it was back then, but... So, this work session today is to talk about where we're at with the bond measure for streets. Brief history, in November of 2008, the Eugene voters approved a five-year, $35.9 million bond measure to fix city streets. The conditions stipulated within the resolution and within the bond measure itself included, you know, a few specific criteria. One was that there was a project list, 32 specific projects, that the money would be allocated to. Secondly, there would be an outside financial auditor to verify that the funds were used for the intended purpose. And third, that a street repair review panel would be established to advise the city manager with a mission, I just quote, "was to prepare a report, separate and distinct from the report prepared by the outside auditor, documenting the city's use of the bond proceeds and noting whether the bond proceeds were used in compliance with terms of Bond Resolution 4953," end quote. So, the work session today is to present publicly both sets of findings, that from the auditor and that from the street repair review panel. In retrospect, 2010 was the year that it was probably hard to drive almost anywhere without seeing something going on. Not all that work was related to the bond measure, but it was significant. The bond measure projects concluded in the 2010 construction season, pretty highly visible, 18th Avenue between Chambers and City View, Good pasture Island Road west of the Delta Highway Bridge, Harlow Road from I-5 to Coburg Road, Patterson Street from 13th to 23rd, the new concrete intersection at 29th and Willamette intersection, Willamette Street from 46th Street south to Spencer's Crest, and then some work on the Fern Ridge Bike and Pedestrian Path and the West Moreland Connector in the vicinity of Polk Street. Total bond expenditures in 2010 were about $5.7 million. Total bond expenditures to date for the first two seasons, about $8.4 million. The findings from the independent auditor, Eisler CPA, are included in your packet. Kind of typical accountant language, but I would point out, within the letter from Eisler, their comment that, bearing in mind that this was not a full and complete financial audit, they tested about 23 percent of the expenditures. Their conclusion was that, and quoting, "Based on our limited testing, we noted that the city followed the purpose and limitation of City Council Resolution Number 4953, and elsewhere in the letter indicated that no exceptions were noted." The final piece of the bond measure stipulated the establishment of a street repair review panel. Some of them are in the audience that we might just point out at this juncture. Janet Calvert is here, Howie Bonnet is here, John Borowski is here, all members of the panel. We appointed 12 members in October of 2009. Hopefully, they find this work rewarding. We do appreciate having them, and I think maybe they enjoy the work because all 12 of them agreed to serve for the second year of this and came back for this round. The group met three times over the past couple of months. We took a bus tour of the completed work and what is proposed for 2011. The group was good enough to pose for a group photo with their last meeting, and that is in the report that you also have. Just for the record, the rest of the folks participating in the group were Paul Adkins, Dan Brown, Paul Holbo, Bob Klein, Steve Lee, Bruce Mulligan, Clayton Walker, Gary Wildish, and Jim Wilcox. Within the report from the panel, you'll find the statement that, and this is, again, quote, "We unanimously conclude that the bond proceeds were used for the authorized purposes and in compliance with limitations and restrictions outlined in Council Resolution 4953." Other notes, I think that bear mentioning from their report, the group acknowledged the leadership in sustainable construction practices. They noted the seven bond measure projects in 2010 provided more than 80 full-time construction jobs in the community. They appreciated that we had taken heed of their advice from a year ago and have attempted to accelerate the construction schedule in subsequent years to take advantage of our favorable bidding climate. Anticipated the completion of all bond measure projects, the complete list of 32, at which time we anticipate having some leftover money to program some additional projects. The group expressed a willingness to assist in developing an expanded list and further to assume a broader advocacy role in the overall issue of transportation funding, and we expect to take them up on this offer in the months and years ahead. And finally, we're making progress. The bonds are doing what they were intended to do, but the current rate of investment is still not sufficient to keep the backlog from growing. I wanted to make a note today to express some appreciation to a few important stakeholders in this issue. First, I suppose, the Eugene voters for approving this measure two years ago that's made it possible to give a more favorable report on street maintenance than what we've given for a while. Secondly, the engineering staff who continually come forward with innovative practices, whether it's the warm mix asphalt, whether it's the full-depth reclamation and other recycling measures. This has demonstrated already a record of getting more work done for less money, at a higher standard, in a more environmentally friendly manner, so it's the classic win-win-win, and very much appreciate their efforts. We appreciate the work of the finance staff in finding innovative funding mechanisms so that through the line of credit option of issuing bonds, we're putting the absolute maximum amount of these dollars on the ground and not into overhead and administrative costs. And then, kind of the forgotten partner in these things is the local contractor pool. I think that with the exception of a fraction of a percentage of this work, it has gone to local contractors and local jobs, and they have, without exception, done outstanding work, established good relations with the neighborhoods that they're working in, and really done some good work for us. Looking ahead to the summer of 2011, another busy year ahead of us in terms of the unaudited list of bond projects being developed. More work on 18th Avenue this year from Patterson to Washington, work on Coburg Road between Willackensie and Oakway, Congress Street in West Eugene from 7th to 11th, Hilliard from 24th to 34th, Pearl Street between 4th and Broadway, River Road from Horn Lane to Railroad Boulevard, Willamette Street from 29th to 46th, and Wilson Street, again in West Eugene, from 5th to 7th. The off-street system this year will be a portion of the South Bank path between Maury Jacobs Park and Ferry Street Bridge. In addition to those, a non-inclusive list of other projects that we have going that are not bond-funded, you know, i.e. through gas tax or grant funding or others, significant work on Alder Street, on 13th Avenue, on City View, Green Acres Road, some Washington-Jefferson Street intersections, MLK Boulevard, and numerous slurry seals throughout the city. So, another busy construction year on the horizon. In terms of our overall funding picture, I'll just close with this. In terms of our capital preservation needs, which are being partially offset through this bond measure, I guess my message today is that a lot of good work has been completed through this measure, and we're grateful for that. We need to be forward-thinking, the bond measure will expire in a few years, and what do we do beyond that, and recognizing that it was only a piece of the overall solution when it was implemented. In terms of operation and maintenance, with the now full implementation of House Bill 2001, which included as one of its component parts, the six-cent state gas tax increase that went into effect a few weeks ago, I can tell you that the road fund is balanced through the six-year forecast period, although, as we get to the end of that, current expenditures indicate we will still be below the reserve target. Certainly, a more optimistic picture than I've been able to paint for you on that for the 10 years we've been talking about that, so we are making a little bit of progress, but work remains on all these topics. So, as we more or less celebrate these accomplishments today, we need to keep in mind the task at hand. We do still have a significant backlog of deferred maintenance to address. Those conclude my comments. If Mayor is interested in seeing if there are any members of the Street Repair Review Panel who wish to make comments, we could do that, or we can put questions.
I think we'd really love to hear from members of the committee if anyone wants to make.
Come on up to the table if you want to make some comments.
Of course, John, come on.
(Laughter).
Join us, Mayor, please.
Even if you don't want to make comments, you want to join?
Yeah, well, thank you very much. You know what the composition of the committee is, so you know it's a very varied committee, and it couldn't have been a pesky committee as far as staff was concerned. I think it wasn't, and a lot of that was due to the quality of the staff. And I would say, on my behalf and on the behalf of the committee, that any questions we had were dealt with openly and completely, and we were able to fulfill our responsibility as defined in the bond measure within a time period of three meetings and still had sufficient time for spirited discussions. And so, I can assure you that we weren't simply just a rubber-stamp committee, but I also want you to know that I think the staff and Kurt and the department are doing a wonderful job, and I don't think you have any reasons to worry about what they're up to and the quality of the work they're doing.
All right.
Yeah, I would echo what Howie said. Also, I was really impressed with the makeup of the committee. I mean, we had people from the construction industry, we had people from the bicycle and pedestrian advocates, people, you know, from all walks, giving, you know, developers and regular citizens, and it was well thought out. People looked into it and gave some good advice, I think. Again, just to echo what Kurt said, we were all advocates for better roads in that committee. That is one thing that we did have in common, even we may have had some differences, but we all had that in common. And so, going forward, I think it would behoove the council to use us in any way that you see fit, whether it's helping to develop a list of the next ones to bring to you if there is extra money left over, or going forward on how to best possibly put forward another bond measure and make it a successful bond measure. We were pleased to see this year, and Kurt didn't mention it, but, and it was kind of elusive, but the backlog actually went down this year. It's for the first time in 10 years, but it was, but it's, it was a one-year thing. It's going back up next year, and we all felt strongly that that needs to be addressed, you know, because we're not going to be able to whittle down the backlog with this bond measure. And that was something that was addressed, you know, in the subcommittee that was put forth by the city council. This was one component of their recommendations, and I think that we don't want to give a false sense of, you know, everything's fine with our road system. I think there still needs to be more work done, and the committee was on that page, I think, as well. So, just going forward, you know, we're open to anything beyond the charge, you know, that you guys might feel we might be helpful in, and with that, I think we'll let it go.
Janet?
Yeah.
I certainly echo both of their comments. The quality of the committee, I thought, was really outstanding, and I learned a whole lot. When one gets onto a committee, you all of a sudden start looking at things differently. And I'm much more aware of, they call it road improvement or road maintenance, but this is my pothole committee, and I have fun with it. One of the interesting things on our tour, and so that you all become aware of it, you know, where there's manhole covers and there are kind of a triangular cutout, and then all of a sudden, things start happening in those places. If you start watching, you'll see it. They've discovered if they make round holes where the round, for their manhole covers, they deteriorate less quickly because the weight is more evenly held when big trucks go over it. So, that's one of the things that they're going to, and I found that fascinating, and as I drive around, I keep watching all the pothole, all the manhole covers. But I think the emphasis of also including, and it does in this bond measure, the alternate modes of transportation, the bicycle, the pedestrian ways, is really important, and I hope that, should there be another bond measure, that that emphasis or that division of support will continue. So, thank you.
Thank you. I really, I know I say on a party of all of us, and you'll probably hear from some people talk around the table, we really appreciate the work of this committee, and just, some of you are here and others aren't, but Kurt, it would be nice to be able to send a letter of appreciation to the whole committee, so we work together on that. And just want to say that during these tough times, it's really heartening to hear about the jobs that were part of this, and 80 jobs, and it's heartening to hear that when we do things that are better practices, like the warm asphalt and the reuse, that it actually saves us money. So, it's doing both, it's doing, reducing our impact and at the same time, saving us money, which is what we want to do and the public wants us to do. So, I think that's all a very good example that we can give to the public of how these things are working the way we want them to, but I hear very loudly from the committee and from you that we still have plenty left to try to keep moving on. I will tell you, though, as I go around the community, I hear all the time, "Thanks for fixing those roads." So, people do feel a sense of movement, and they do feel a sense of improvement. I hear the cautionary note, don't think that, but I don't think you drive around very much and think the job's done yet either. So, we all know, go over streets that still need repair in our community, so big thanks about that, and that's about as much as I have to say on this right now, just a real appreciation. Mike, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Kurt, congratulations and thank you to you and your staff for a job well done so far. There's more to do, I know. And certainly, a big thank you to all the volunteers on the committee who've worked so hard to make sure that everything is as it said, as we said it would be when we went out for this. It's greatly appreciated, and John, I think we should take you up on your offer and look at what other ways the committee might continue to serve as we move into the next phase in the next couple of years, maybe even a question of when is the appropriate timing on that and the best ways to proceed. I guess I'd start by asking that of you, Kurt. I look at this list that schedules everything out through '13 and wonder when, if you've begun to give thought to, is the appropriate time to start looking at Phase Two?
Phase Two being a follow-up bond measure?
Correct.
That might actually be Phase Three. I think Phase Two is looking at where we're at budget-wise when the 32 projects are completed, and I think we'll see what we can add to that.
Yeah, I noticed that it comes out at 35.9 here. What was the total authority, 38, 39?
35.9, and those are programmed costs, and what we're finding is that our bid prices the last two seasons have been very favorable, and so, we're seeing a bit of a surplus from that.
I guess what I'm asking is, when the bond measure went out, the total authority that was voted?
35.9.
Okay. I thought it was more than that for some reason. That's why I was...
And the council reserved authority to add projects to the list of 32, and so, I guess the first part of my answer is that we will begin visiting with you about that potential expanded list once we see what bids look like later this spring, and we will visit with our committee as we bring that recommendation together. So, as to the next bond measure, it's a five-year measure that would expire by the clock in November 2013, and so, I don't have a good crystal ball today to see what else is going to be on the horizon as to whether it would be prudent to look at getting a year ahead of that or waiting up to that point, or what is, what'll turn out, and where are we at with it. But I think before I got to that, I think the council needs to have a conversation around the affirmation of a follow-on bond measure and at what amount and for what duration for continuing this type of work, and do you wish to continue discussions of some of the alternative funding means that we've talked about, the transportation system, maintenance fee, some that have been talked about and rejected, like garbage hauler fees, and other prospects that become better ideas given the point in time, so...
I want to thank you for bringing that up again there, too. I appreciate it, my friend. The other question I had then was kind of tangential to that last part about where the rest of some of the funding streams come in and what you're able to do with those. I guess I'm asking about the department's capacity as we move forward to do some of the work with unimproved roads that have been done in the last couple of years. And I know that there's some advanced technical ways to deal with potholes. One of the ways, the innovative ways that your department came up with, especially some of the streets in my ward that a lot of people were very happy about, was the kind of thin overlay opportunity. I've been approached by a number of, you know, folks who know about that now and want to see if that's possible in their area, and so, I'm asking about capacity as we move forward to do some of that this summer.
Yeah. We, of course, have gotten a number of those inquiries in our office as well. There's been considerable amount of that type of work done. It's a topic, I think, as you understand, completely separate from the capital funding process. It's an activity that's been funded the last three years primarily through a transfer from general fund to do that particular program. Where we see the future on that is with the full implementation of House Bill 2001 that goes to the State Highway Trust Fund that becomes the source of our operations and maintenance money in the road fund, we are anticipating the FY12 budget will show a continuation of that type of work through the road fund over the six-year forecast at about a $200,000 per year level. That doesn't seem like a lot of money, but the dollar does stretch quite a ways on the maintenance overlays, and so, we see that continuing over the next six years at least.
The budget for the last couple of years was closer to a million just for that part, was it not?
We had initially budgeted a million dollars that was broken into component parts. A portion of that was for this type of overlay work. Part of it was for, what you might recall, we referred to as the pothole patrol, to try and just get a grip on the number of potholes we couldn't catch up with, and then to do some intersection work. So, it wasn't, it was a portion of the million dollars that went to...
Roughly what portion?
I would say, on average, it would be a third or so.
So, it's not a significant decrease, then, you're looking at?
It'll be a decrease, but we've caught up on some of the really nasty roads, and I wouldn't want to represent to you that that's a number that allows us to proactively respond to every inquiry that we get, but it will continue to show some improvement.
Lastly, I'd like to put in, again, another plug, and I don't know whether it requires a poll, but I'd love to see us have a long-term plan of action for how the city's going to deal with the unimproved streets that we have. That's never a part of the backlog of maintenance that we talk about, but, I mean, we all know it's a significant number. That's one of the things, the last time we had this conversation, I asked about, can we start talking about a master plan or, you know, a comprehensive plan for how to deal with that? So, does that require a council work session, or?
I'll let you weigh in, but I'll weigh in also. Yeah, yeah. I believe we already have that direction from the last time we talked, that we've done some work on trying to assemble what a longer-term plan would look like, you know, until we knew what our operations and maintenance budget was going to look like. It was more of a guess, but I don't think we need further direction on bringing you back some ideas as to mitigating the unimproved street situation.
And I would just build on that, and it's part of the ongoing discussion around sustainable maintenance of all our infrastructures. Roads are a piece of that. We've talked about parks and wreck in the past, and so, we just need to continue that conversation so council can provide some direction on where you want to land on all of those and how we get there. We'll continue to provide that information, but as Kurt said, we don't need any more direction on that. We're already moving towards that, and so, this will be an ongoing part of our discussions over this year and next year as we talk about all infrastructures.
So, you have it on your radar screen, but you don't have like a separate sort of, here's our plan for dealing with this sort of, is that what I heard?
No, but we do have in mind bringing you something to that effect at some point.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, guys.
Chris, you're next.
Thank you. I'm really appreciative of all the work that's been done by everybody, including the committee and the staff and everyone else, and this was one of the key issues for me when I first got elected to the council. And at that time, it was an enormous conversation which didn't seem to have much resolution in sight. I mean, the conversation was very depressing at the time. Lots of need, not much money. We had problems with ONM, we had problems with backlog, and we couldn't get a handle on it. I think the subcommittee, which John, you know, was one of the members of, as far as I'm concerned, really did a lot of good work, of which a lot of it is still useful, and I think Kurt's point about this not being a magic silver bullet is really an essential piece of the conversation. This moves us a little bit forward, helps to stem some of the problems, helps to get us stabilized, maybe is the word I'm looking for, but it doesn't really cure the disease. We're stable, but we still need a lot of work, and so, I think it's very important for us to celebrate this incremental victory, and I don't want to diminish that at all. This is a very significant victory for us in terms of being able to get stable when it didn't look like we could. And then, to use that energy and that celebration to say, all right, let's move forward, let's get actually, start getting cured here. And it's going to be a heavy lift. We have let this problem go for decades, and you're not going to fix it that easily. And so, it's going to require a lot of willpower on our part, and I think we have demonstrated that. I think the bond measure and the community's support has demonstrated we will... I think the bond measure and the community support has demonstrated, we will have the willpower to do it if we want to. And I just want to reinforce the fact that we still need to keep going. Celebrate now, keep moving, there's still a lot to do. But I'm just really pleased. I'm really glad that we kept the promise we made to the voters, and that was the most important part. And we're still keeping it, and I think that's important as well. Thank you.
George Poling?
I'd just like to echo what Mike and Chris said and kind of put a plug in on the overlays for the sandy drive in the other half of Arcadia. I've been receiving inquiries on both of those, wanting to know how and when that's going to happen. So, let's see if we can move those to the top of the list. I also want to thank the Public Works Department and E-Web for coordinating the upcoming project on Colbert Road, which is going to be a major disaster for people trying to travel. They're going to start next month, replacing the water main from, I think it's Oakway all the way up to just Cal Young. And there's some new signals going in there by the car wash on Colbert Road, and then the resurfacing is going to take place, and it's all being done. So, it's, you know, not pave the road first and then tear it up and put the water main in. So, that, I think, is a real good idea. I don't know why it hasn't been done before, but I want to applaud both E-Web and Public Works for, you know, working hand-in-hand on this. And I'm sure there's going to be some sort of cost savings in on that. And then Kurt, you started to touch on part of what I hope to have a discussion later on in a work session, and I brought it out, had a poll sent out on the gas tax, our local gas tax. And when we were discussing putting it on the, you know, adding the gas tax, I said more than once that if the state ever increased its gas tax, that I would be the first one to bring that, our city gas tax back up for discussion. So, that's one of the reasons why I sent that poll out for the work session. And hopefully, we can have a broader discussion on how that's going to impact us, where the money's coming from, and when we're going to be able to take a look at it, you know, when we're going to actually see it coming into our revenue, and what we can do with our local gas tax. So, once again, thanks for all the hard work getting these projects done. And, you know, it is a little difficult to motor around town during the construction period, but it sure makes a difference when it's done. Thank you.
Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, having monitored the council from that backseat over there since May, the primary election, I've heard that congratulations seem to be the order of the day generally around the council table, and I'd like to add to congratulations. Mine's a little bit different, though. Congratulations, Kurt, on finding all the projects that happen to lie on my daily route. And now, I know the culprit. The, that being said, it's remarkable, the tone of the discussion that I'm hearing today based upon, as you mentioned, 10 years ago on the council, when the backlog wasn't going down and people were complaining probably more vociferously than they are even today regarding potholes. And so, it's, a great deal has been done. That being said, I would be remiss in not stepping on my West Eugene bully pulpit for a moment. And counting up the projects from the list, two of them were in Ward Six, both on the same street, those occurred this year, less than any other ward. I'm not saying that that was by design, by any means.
Because you have all this stuff the year before.
That was my next comment, is that we did have a lot the year before. So, that possibly is a testimonial to the fact that we do have better-maintained streets in West Eugene. However, it's not necessarily an easy sell to the people who live on the Irving streets, for instance, and some of the other streets around Willamette High School. So, but really, once again, congratulations, and especially congratulations to the committee and to Ms. Calvert for being the only lady on the committee. How did you do that?
It's a long history.
So, adding to the tenor of the council, thank you and congratulations for a job well done that will be well received by the public.
I just want to add to that, that for those people who are listening, that one of the things that we had talked around the council table about quite a lot was how you reestablish faith with the community that you're going to come through on things. And so, part of the plan the council had here was that you would have a specific list, and you would try to broadly address needs throughout the community, and that you would be able to show people what they'd be getting for their money, and we would be accountable for that. And I mention it again because it's something that actually kind of pops up in conversations every day as we wrestle with other funding issues that people appreciate knowing what it is they're being asked to fund and then to be able to see the results of it. And so, it seems to be effective. And in terms of what Mike was saying, when we originally talked about this, I think we talked about twice as much time and twice as much money, but we thought better to do it for a shorter period of time with less dollars involved in order to be able to be accountable sooner and really demonstrate that we could do this, and that might be something that people would want to be investing in again because they, again, they have a demonstrable effect of their dollars. And that's what we're accountable for to our public. I'd also like to say that, and I didn't say this in my earlier comments, but one of the things the committee brought up was how much they appreciated the expertise, talents, and willingness of our staff. And so, I want to, while we're applauding the committee, I want to applaud the value that we have of that combination of our community members and our staff working together on behalf of our community, and that we're very appreciative of that. And then I just say, you know, I drive down Fifth every day. Have you been on Fifth lately? It needs work. So, you need to ask something. Yep. Not on the left. It really, so, yes. So, anyway, thank you very much. I think everybody's had a chance to say something. George, did you have anything you wanted to add to the?
Well, I just basically just add my voice and thank Public Works for doing a great job, and thanks to the Citizens Committee for overseeing it all. I really appreciate that part, too. And it has worked kind of like you all thought it would. People have, I hear, I'm sure the other councillors would agree, this happens frequently. People come up to me, and you know I'm on the council, and they go, "I just want to thank you guys for finally doing something about the roads." I said, "Well, thank Public Works. You know, they're the guys that are really doing the work." And so, the community is very appreciative, I'll tell you that. And also, on the other hand, though, it kind of worked like we thought it would, too. Once the projects started, we knew we would hear fewer complaints about the bad roads, then we hear complaints about, "Oh, all the construction that's going on, you can't get to work." And I'd much rather hear that than the other one, so. That'll happen again, too, shortly. Thanks.
Yes, Kurt?
Just going to plant a seed or two as we conclude here and respond to, you know, Pat's and George's comments, just briefly. As we started into this process, the overall network of streets was in, you know, a pretty dismal state of repair, so it wasn't too difficult to find projects throughout the city that were something for everyone. In the case of Pat's ward, while it may be true that you don't see as many projects on the bonded list, I think you need to take a more holistic view at all the funding that has been assembled to work on this issue. And before we got to the bond measure, we were successful in some state funding for, federal funding for Roosevelt. We had done Royal, Barger...
Elmyra.
Elmyra as an LID, and some other projects that get done throughout the city that aren't necessarily as a part of the bond measure. So, I would, we've tried hard to establish this program as a community-wide and system-wide issue that we're trying to deal with while realizing that there has to be something done throughout the city. So, we're cognizant of that and appreciate the comment. Following on, on looking at it as a system-wide basis, what we're doing with capital preservation today and dealing with massive backlog that we started with, the tools we have to address that today are this bond measure and the local gas tax. Those are the two sources. So, as we deliberate in the future on where we're at with local gas tax, it is a significant part, and 100% of that goes to this type of work right now. Absent that resource, there would have to be a different means of dealing with that. The state six inch increase is rolled through the State Highway Trust Fund and goes into all the other operations and maintenance activities that we do, from the unimproved street program to keeping the street lights and signals and crack ceiling and that type of day-to-day work going. So, just leave you with the thought that this has been a complicated set of funding packages that have been assembled over time. And as we move one piece around, it essentially moves the wrinkle in the blanket somewhere or else, and we need to be cognizant of continuing to deal with that big picture.
Speaking of that, and maybe that's part of what you guys need to be thinking about, too, since we heard from E-Web that there's going to be a lot of work done on their systems that are going to require pulling up pavement, I'm sure those will be coordinated together because of the steam work and all of that. So, I don't, that probably moves things up the line in some ways that people will be questioning why that road is being dealt with at this time, but you have to kind of put those things together to get the best value for your, for the investments that we have. So, I'm assuming that we're going to see if, it seems like the, needing to make a lot of those improvements faster than they thought they were going to have to. And so, that means that's going to alter what we, some of the things we choose to work on as well, I would think.
True. E-Web has been an incredibly good partner with us on scheduling and coordinating this type of work and part and parcel of the decision matrix for which projects we schedule.
Good. Because I do think that ends, and we all hear that, the public always has questions about why we choose to do what we do and why we choose this one over another one. And it's something that we need to inform and talk to people about all the time, what you do in the short run to prevent things from getting worse, what you do to hold it in place till you can get to it, all of those different things that are part of the, not to speak of putting it together with other projects, are part of the matrix of trying to figure out where you need to do, what, when, and to do it the best we can, given all of those different moving things. So, thank you very much, Kurt, and thank you for partnering for us. And I think that's about it for today.